All right, welcome everybody. If we could start with Pastor New?
Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, and all who are gathered here, grace and peace to you. Let us pray for all people of God according to their needs. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you provide the community of Los Banos, the many resources we are blessed with here. We ask your loving hands guide those who toil in the wake of flooding this week. Your servant Paul wrote to the Romans saying, "Governing authorities are servants for your good." There is no authority except from you, and authority is instituted by you, and we should respect such authority. Let all who come before this council this evening approach in a manner of respect and civility. We pray your spirit fill all public servants from our mayor and council to the city manager and all who work under them, to guide them in doing the Lord's will, caring for those who need help. As Jesus taught us, how we care for the least of us is how we care for you. And in your name we pray, amen.
All right, and since we're still standing, if we could have Acting Police Chief Raina with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it is 6:01. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This time, if we could have a roll call. All right, we have a quorum. Let's move on to item four, consideration of approval of the agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda submitted. Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
I have a second. Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
All right. First by Jones, second by Lambert. All in favor? All right. Motion passes. Let's move on to item five, which is the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. Includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chamber informational table. At this time, I would like to invite members of the public to come forward and speak, and just remind those to please silence or turn off your cell phones. So at this time, I'll invite the public to come up.
Hi, Kathy Ballard, resident of Los Banos. Then I just learned I didn't even have to say my name. Someone told me that. I'm going to start off by saying I know you can't answer my questions. It's just information to voice my questions and other people. I've noticed on the agenda, the appointment to a downtown association as one of our representatives here. I think it's time that we had somebody new, someone with a fresh view in regards to it. All the information I've learned from the downtown I received not from my council. I have no idea what's going on there. It's me digging to find out what's going on. And that's not the way it should be if I have a representative here on the council that should be reporting it. I did learn, though, from city meetings that the archway to the downtown, the land purchased on the corner and possibly sidewalks is something that the city is going to be paying for or has paid for. It seems like a huge chunk to emphasize the downtown that hasn't been brought up to tourist attraction. It seems kind of premature in regards to that. The other thing I wanted to bring up was that all through the city, there's mentioning of rehire for a city manager. You all know my opinion in regards to that. But I also looked at the contract in regards to hiring a consultant that costs $25,000 that is lost money if we don't even look at other people who are applying for the job. Another dent in our general fund because we paid for a consultant the last time and didn't utilize them. I tried to call the city. They informed me to call the city attorney in regards to now we have two anticipated litigations out there. At first, I thought it was a typo that they just repeated it. But Lucy informed me, no, and that contact the city attorney, which I did. But I called late in the day and didn't get an answer back. Are these type of litigations go away if you do rehire? And is that why we're looking at it? And that's why all the rumors are out there? Just wanted to express my opinion and others that keep coming to me but refuse to come here at City Hall because they don't want to put a face to their upset. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. My name is Shandra Lewis, and I'm a resident of Los Banos and a resident of the Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park. At the beginning of December, I believe there was a voter that there was going to be removing the homeless behind the park within two weeks. Well, we're at six weeks, I believe, and there's no actions. So, and we have not been... No one has come forward to us. Mr. Begonia, you haven't reached out to us to ask us, and you know, and I'm sure as you ran for your position, you knew and you've heard this over and over, how the residents have come and we have complained, and we've done all that we can do, and you have not yet reached out to us, and we don't know why. So do we go through the interim city manager? And are you able to help us? Was the last one able to help? We don't know what to do anymore. We keep asking, and we were... And you said you would remove them, and they're still there. So is that, was that just to give us a Christmas present? To say, oh, we'll just say this and then not, no action be taken? We would like to have someone reach out to us since we reach out to you. Thank you.
My name is Jacqueline Lawrence. I'm going to be leaving soon because the cancers went into lymph nodes. I'm going to be gone for a year. I have worked with the homeless since 2002 from San Antone to Los Banos. And a little bit in Merced, not much. Okay, I talked to the other city manager, and he was on board what we're doing. Elaine Corey has books, magazines, and I can bring it. They're pods. They grow up very fast. You put a round circle for cement. You just need the property. They have a kitchen in it. I would suggest, because they're circles, that you put the people in the circle and then have at least two of the pods that you would put kitchens in. Me and my mom, Elaine, me and Gloria Mendonza, we do the warming center. We do the cooling center. It doesn't work. And it's not a fix. So what I want to do, and Jim Reyes and Rusty Reyes is on board with me, is that I want to take the property that's on the other side of Los Banos, going to Draw's Palace with the Duck Clubs, and I want to put a lot of different things there, including a new hospital with two stories with Kaiser. But toward the back of it, I want to put what they do in Colorado. It's called tiny house villages. And I don't want to do two houses like they did to build. I don't have time for that. They build them themselves. They're a kid. They come out of Texas. And the most of the homeless that are single, they want the $25,000 to $35,000 one. Now, I have a way, and you might laugh about it. It's businesses called hen pecking bullshitters and rooster talk. And me and Kent Segenhagen, he's the vice president, we came up with this. And what it is, is share. We take a business, and a lot of these people are very intelligent, and they make things with their hands. And they go into the business, especially where Old City Market used to be, and they got a space, just like you do on the street there, and they make the income. And they do this in New York and stuff. And so they would have an income, plus they would pay paid for the disabled to... They would be paid to build their disabled tiny houses too. Because we have Jackie over there at Food for Us. She makes me cry. He's in a wheelchair. He's in there forever, and you guys aren't doing nothing. He's in the rain. He smells like pee. This is ridiculous. Los Banos is allowing this to happen. Now, another man's in a motorhome over there by the fairgrounds right now, and I gave him some diapers, but Jackie's proud. I want you to listen to me before I leave. I'm leaving in April to Texas to save my life. I'm trying to get grandkids to live for. Some are here. I've lived here since 1968. My family built that dam. So I want you to listen to me because I was homeless. I couldn't even get out of the tent because Jose had to help me get up. These people can't afford nothing because they have child support they owe. They can't, they're waiting for their ass to sign, and it takes years to get it. That's what happened to me. I had to pick my neck in the car wreck and have forty strokes before I got it.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
I might full my time, and if I have any extra, I'll leave it to the... Okay, my name is Blanche, and I wanted to go ahead and finish up what I was mentioning yesterday or two weeks ago. I do want to mention one quick thing. The Boys and Girls Club of Los Banos and Merced was gifted 93,000 pounds of fruit cans from Dole. And if there's anybody out there or if you guys know of someone that can receive it, they're more than happy to give it to individuals. Their phone number is 209-722-9922. You could reach Sue or see there. Also, the local individuals are Sandy and Stephanie, if you know them, from the Boys and Girls Club. But I wanted to mention, to finish up, besides the nonprofits getting together to sponsor rooms and stuff for the future homeless shelter, if you guys agree. There is an app that is wonderful in order to tackle... It's a strategic plan, and part of this app is to help end homelessness. It is from Cincinnati, Ohio, but they have a good idea. Individuals can have an app. They could download it, and every page has a donate button to it. One of the benefits of that is when they see homeless or if they know someone that is about to be homeless, they can tap the button and a homeless representative will lend, will go to that person for aid. I'm not explaining it correctly, but I'm pretty sure one of you guys can download it and take a look at it. It's just a fantastic idea. But I lend my extra last time to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm back again. Michelle Sandoval with the Chamber of Commerce, the executive director. I first want to thank everybody that was able to make it out to the ribbon cutting for Planet Fitness. Appreciate your, I met your wife. Thank you so much for coming out. That means a lot to the chamber. I also would like to talk about an upcoming, another upcoming ribbon cutting that's coming up for Valley Spring Memory Care. It's going to be on the 26th of Thursday this month. And just bringing up again is our Downtown Springs Street Fair. It's going to be coming up in April. We have a very full calendar of events that will be coming up. We have the street fair in April, or Downtown Springs Street Fair in April. We have a Father's Day event in June. We have our Fall Street Fair in September. We just started up with the new Halloween trunk-or-treat event in October. And then we have our annual Christmas parade that we do in December, which got a little bit bigger this 2022. We added vendors and a whole Christmas at the Plaza section. So that's our upcoming events for 2023. And I also would like just to say how grateful the chamber is for the support that we've been getting from the city the last couple months. Without that support, we wouldn't be able to do what we do best, and that is promote the city and unite the community, and that's what we're all about. So I just wanted to come up and say thank you again for that. And those are the dates that are coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Last call? All right, seeing no more from the public, I'll go to our city clerk. Do we have any?
Dear City Council members, my name is Casey Miller, and I am the park operator at the Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park. As you are aware, we have been attending countless meetings and writing countless letters to the council, literally begging for your help. On December 7, 2022, the city council discussed the homeless encampment on your city property behind our park. The council took a vote, and it was determined that the city would close the camp and absorb the individuals back into the community. The council stated this would take two to four weeks. Well, here we are, not two weeks, not four weeks, but six weeks later, and the camp is still there. Our tenants still cannot sleep due to the excessive noise and constant drumming by the drummer boy. The homeless are still trespassing, still stealing, still fighting, still creating absolutely unsanitary conditions, not only in the camp but also in our park. Our tenants still hear explosions and how it sounds like guns are going off. One of my tenants provided me current pictures and drone footage, and the camp is disgusting. Garbage is everywhere. What the heck is going on? Why are they still there? Not one of you has reached out to me since December 7. Clearly, you all must have known that the camp would not be dissolved within the two to four weeks. So don't you think that someone, especially our new district rec Begonia, should have had the courtesy to talk to us about it? The lack of communication on your part is astounding, frustrating, and completely unprofessional. So Councilmember Begonia, I would appreciate you contacting me right away to let me know what is going on and when this camp will be dissolved. I have 104 families that we're counting on the city council to follow through with their decision. We have been asking you for three years now. Don't you think it's time you did right by your tax-paying citizens? Ms. Maloney has my phone number and can give it to you, Casey Miller. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. And I just confirmed with our city attorney, and I know it's not on the agenda, so we can't have a back-and-forth discussion on it. But I just want to give, you know, whoever wrote that in and Shandra you that the cleanup operation is going forward. The only hiccup was the weather. That was literally the only thing that stopped the operation, and I've received updates. And so I do apologize that we have not updated you on that, so... But yes, I just want to be very straightforward about that, that the cleanup process is continuing. All right. Moving on to item six, consideration of approval of the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 236-808 through 236-962 in the amount of $2,904,067.57. Minutes for the December 7, 2002 city council meeting. Minutes for the December 13, 2002 special city council meeting. Minutes for the January 4, 2023 city council meeting. Minutes for the January 11, 2023 special city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6604, Reauthorizing Remote Teleconference Meetings of the Legislative Bodies of the City of Los Banos pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the items as submitted? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Thank you. And a second, Councilmember Begonia?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Begonia. All in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes. All right, so now let's move to item seven, appointment of a city council member to the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District Board, also known as the LBDP bid. For this, we'll go to interim city manager, Suzanne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So just a brief background on this particular item. The city council back in December of 2020 appointed Councilmember Jones to sit on the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District, and that was for a two-year term expiring December 31, 2022. So staff is asking, and it's actually on behalf of the Los Banos Downtown Association, for a representative from the city council to sit on the P-Bid board. And this is because the city does have property within the improvement district and also to just have representation from the city. So that's essentially what this item is about. This appointment would be for two years. It would end December 31, 2024, which is the sunset of the P-Bid. So with that, staff is asking that the city council would follow the procedure of appointment that's provided within the staff report. This is the procedure that we used last time. So the process would be that the city council would accept nominations from the council and then vote on the nominations in order of the nominations received. And then the first nominee to receive the majority approval would then be selected to represent the city on the P-Bid board. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. Mrs. SZA, the question I have, I went to their website. I don't see that they post agendas or have any minutes. Do you know when they have their meetings and how often they have their meetings? and how often they have their meetings?
They do try to have them monthly. Their executive director had been ill, so they hadn't had one. But they do post on, they post their agendas and their meetings on their website. But also because they have to follow the Brown Act, they do post them on their door as well. That's where the meetings are held. They're not held virtually. They do also post them on their Facebook page and anywhere within their social media that they can get the word out that they are having a meeting. But it's generally the third Thursday of the month is when they have them, and they're in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any, anyone else have any questions? Or no questions? Okay, so our process would just be to, the council here, make a nomination and then by majority vote that nomination. Okay. Well, I'm going to start it off. I know that Councilmember Jones has said on this. He's very familiar with this. I do believe it is in your district. Okay. And again, who, in my opinion, who has the most experience with property management would be Councilmember Jones, in my opinion. I'm happy to nominate him to continue his role on that, if anybody has anything else or any other discussion. But I'll make my nomination. Yeah. Did you? Councilmember Lewis?
You left my line.
Oh, I'm sorry. Helps if I turn my microphone on. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes. I realize that this is in Councilmember Jones's district, but I personally would like to see the position rotated to give each council member an opportunity to understand the operation of that organization and what goes on with the downtown association. So I know that, well, Mr. Begonia, I think, is teaching during the day, so he can't do that. The only other person is Mr. Lambert, who I think has Mondays and Tuesdays unencumbered. I don't know if he wants to do it, but I'd like to put forth that as a nomination as well.
Do you want me to turn?
Due to my business being downtown, I don't believe.
Are you moving?
Business being relocated and.
Well, it would, yeah. Okay, so I'll withdraw the nomination.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, so currently, we have Councilmember Jones. Do we have a second or any other nominations? Okay, so at this time, we'll take a vote then, if we could have a roll call. And then if we could get a motion to adopt the resolution. Councilmember Lambert?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 6605, appointing Councilmember Jones to represent the City of Las Vanas on the Las Vanas Downtown Property and Business Improvement District.
Thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
Second.
Second. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. All right, moving on to Item 8, 8A. Appointment of Commissioners to the following Commissions. Item A, Parks and Recreation Commission, one, two-year term expiring December 31, 2024. Las Vanas Unified School District Representative Gary Munoz. Item B, Planning Commission, one, four-year term in District 2, expiring December 31, 2026. This is Clarence Robinson. And one, two-year term at large, expiring December 31, 2024. And this is Elias Reyes. The recommendations to appoint Commissioners to fill the vacancies. Okay, so we're going to vote on these one at a time. So let's start with A, which is the Las Vanas Unified School District Representative Gary Munoz, who I have a, do we do a roll call vote? Okay, let's do a motion to appoint. Anyone want to make a motion to appoint?
On Item A, Parks and Recreation Commission.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
I'll second the motion.
First by Lambert, second by Begonia. All by, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Let's move on to B. Planning Commission, one, four-year term. This is for Clarence Robinson. Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Robinson? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and make that motion also to appoint for Planning Commission.
Thank you. And a second? Councilmember Begonia?
I'll second the motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. An item, or the third one, the two-year term at large, and this is for Elias Reyes. Can I get a motion? Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. And a second? Councilmember? Just getting ahead of myself there. Do we have a second? All right, Councilmember Begonia, a second. All right. So all three, all those in favor? Aye, all right. All right, so congratulations to Mr. Munoz, Mr. Robinson, and Mr. Reyes for your appointments to your commissions. Moving on to Item 9, Advisement of Public Notices. I understand there is no report. All right. Item 10, City Manager Report.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'll keep this brief, and thank you, Mayor, for updating Mrs. Lewis on the encampment. I was going to touch upon that as I did the last City Council meeting, that it had been delayed. It had been delayed to this week due to weather, but it's being pushed out. Chief Rena, do you have a date? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but would it be next week?
So we're talking about that. The concern is it is so flooded out there right now that our equipment would get stuck.
Right, okay. So I do, for clarification, do you want to let Mrs. Lewis know that it is not just a closure, it's also cleanup? So to get all of that equipment out there to do the proper cleanup, we need to make sure that the ground is suitable for us to get out there. But we are, we are working on it. And the commitment to the council was two to four weeks. We are trying to stay to that commitment. And then the next item is on small business loans through ARPA. Our interim finance director and myself, we've been working on this. He's putting together the application, and we're planning to go live with the application February 1. So we'll be going through those applications on a first-come, first-served, and we will be noticing those applications on the city's website, on our social media. We'll be utilizing our chamber as well and our business networks to get the word out, to encourage businesses to apply for that loan, which could potentially turn into a grant. And I did just have a baby. I know you all, yeah, thank you. So I will, I'm here, obviously, I'm physically here in person. But if need be, please reach out to me via email or phone, and I would be happy to get back to you. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. And congratulations on behalf of myself and the council. Now let's go to Item 11, Report Update, Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG Peninsula Clean Energy PC Measure B Committee, and the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and Las Vanas Downtown Property and Business Improvement. I don't have anything to report as far as MCAG. Our meeting is tomorrow at 3 o'clock in Merced. And so for the next council meeting, I'll have a report about MCAG. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Well, today in Modesto, Frito-Lay PepsiCo had a celebration and launching of their transformation of their operation fleet to zero admission and a near-zero admission. They have purchased Tesla trucks for their long haul as well as international trucks for using compressed natural gas. Their box cars, their box vehicles, which do the local transportation of their products are also electric. They have natural gas on site for fueling as well as electric charge stations. And their processing plant has been upgraded as well. And again, this is the first maiden event of their factories being upgraded here in the Modesto area. They received a $15 million grant from the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District Board, and they matched it with another $15 million. So that gave them $30 million of working capital to do the upgrade. The CEO of the Northern, North America and Canada, Mr. Stephen Williams, was present along with some of his top executives. And also present was our newly elected congressman, Mr. John DeWorty for District 13, as well as the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Board members. So it was really exciting to see the new equipment. I had a chance to sit in one of the Tesla trucks, and it's kind of like the car. It's just got a computer screen inside there, two computer screens and a few buttons, and that's about it. But I did see one that had the words on there, "ejection seat." So I don't know if it, where it ejects the person, if it goes out the roof or where they go. But I didn't touch that button. So, but it was like being in junk food heaven, for lack of words. They had potato chips. They had corn chips. They had Doritos. They had Cheetos. And it was, it was a really nice event to attend. And of course, you know, in California, there's a big push for going for zero emissions to almost near-zero emissions. So this is a big corporation, and they've taken advantage of the funding that's been given by the federal government, by state carbs. And that money has come down to the San Joaquin Airborne to distribute out to manufacturers and large companies who want to start converting their vehicle product. So that's my report today on the event.
All right, thank you. You had me at junk food, by the way. All right, let's go to our City Councilmember reports. We'll start with Councilmember Jones.
No report, Mayor, just congratulations to Stacy and her family on there.
All right. Councilmember Lewis, do you have anything for your report?
Yes. And again, I hope that our staff, at least if we can't get in there to clean up the ground where the homeless are, at least to start moving them out of there. And when the ground dries up, then, you know, we can get the cleanup done. But we have dry days. I just looked on my phone. Looks like until next Friday, it's a good time to start, you know, dismantling the encampment and moving the residents out of the encampment so that we can keep our commitment to the residents who live in that community. The other question I have is, where is the city on, as far as an update on the hiring of the homeless housing coordinator? Have we started that process? Because certainly, we need to move forward as quickly as possible to either secure a hotel here in town, or a motel, I should say. I know the one that we were using, it sounded like the owner might have been interested in selling that one. So I hope we just don't drop the ball and not move forward on that. We need to make an effort to keep the fire burning on that because we need to do something quickly. I am getting calls from people in my district that are concerned about the homeless who are left out in the rain and no place to go. And it's not to say that, again, the chronically mentally ill are people who need to be in treatment. That's a different story. But for people who are able to follow rules and be managed, we need to start moving forward to do something about that population. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
No, no report today, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Begonia?
I'll just piggyback on what Councilmember Lewis said, and I apologize to Miss Lewis and the other lady that wrote in. And I will be in touch. I will, and not with you and also with the other members of the Rancho Mobile Park and keep you guys updated and be on top of that. So I apologize. That's it.
All right, so I have a couple of things. Number one, you know, my goal is, as far as taking this office and this position, I don't take it lightly. And one of the big things for me is transparency and communication. And so I want to work with our staff of kind of just creating some expectations and goals of how can we better communicate to the public things that we're doing and some of the updates. I know that our staff do an amazing job updating us up here, but there's 43,000 other people that want to hear from us. And so, you know, how we can kind of come up with a better strategy to do that. The other thing is, I want to open it to the public to make appointments. I'm going to do everything I can to stay in the city on Fridays. And so my goal is to spend some time down here and to get some one-on-one time with people and some face-to-face time and to address some things. I love the fact that people come up to the podium. It's great. But I'm sure some people would like to have more than five minutes. And so I want to give people that opportunity, at least my end, anyway, to be here at City Hall and hear your concerns and make myself available. So I'm going to make it to a point that you can come down and make an appointment to meet with me, and I'll do my best to facilitate those appointments. Got my first paycheck as mayor. Boy, was it missing a few zeros. I'm just kidding. You know, up here, we do have jobs and we do have other responsibilities. And so I'll speak for myself when I say I definitely don't do this for the money. However, I do want to incentivize our local nonprofit agencies and organizations. And so what I'd like to do is invite them to come to our public hearings and tell us about the wonderful work that they do as these nonprofits. And if you are a 501(c)(3), I'm going to donate my paycheck to you each month and possibly to a new 501(c)(3) every month. And so again, it's not a lot of money. I'm just going to point that out there. And so I'd like to do that, invite our nonprofits to come forward and tell us the work that they want to do in our city. And again, it's not a whole lot, but it's whatever I can do to help those agencies and organizations. And then lastly, to our Public Works, Neron, your team is amazing. I drove around during the weather these last few weeks and, you know, not seeing flooded streets and listening to my colleagues in other cities and, you know, the horrible things that we see in different parts, like, you know, Planata and Merced. You know, we did not face that here. So I want to thank you and every member of Public Works, outstanding work keeping us dry and keeping our cars on the roads. So I appreciate that. And that concludes my report. So now we're going to move into Item 13, which is closed session conference. Item A, 13A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9B, one potential case. 13B, public employment, city manager recruitment pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957. 13C, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9B, one potential case. And Item 13D, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, interim finance director Kuhn and city attorney Vaughn, employee organizations, unrepresented miscellaneous employees. And with that, we'll move to closed session. All right, we are back from closed session in regards to Item 13A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9B, one potential case. We have no reportable action. Item B, the public employment, city manager recruitment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, we have no reportable action. Item C, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9B, the one case, we have no reportable action. And then finally, Item D, conference with labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, agency designated representatives, interim finance director Kuhn and city attorney Vaughn, employee design, organizations, unrepresented miscellaneous employment, direction has been given to staff. Can I make a, oh, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Councilmember Lewis?
Still moved.
Can I get a second? Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it passes, and we'll adjourn the meeting.